Yeah.
Maintain that one.
Yeah, this was according to Doug. Clearly informationally, guys, pass your tests. You're ready to go.
No.
Certainly could.
You know what? I I ended up. He literally, I can be not focused. Like all week. And so he was responding to me.
Oh, you was.
Yeah, we had no idea like it was going through a new inbox that we hadn't set up.
Everybody's. I don't believe it.
Well, I think right now we have.
It's even the same.
Yeah.
Building we're getting there. They said we should bring it in here.
Yeah.
Everyone has. Seems we got a whole lot, but.
Oh, I got. She can look. We have a schedule gathering.
The shredder would be great.
Oh, well.
It took you four.
That's something I don't know.
Take what we need. Let the other counties have it nonetheless.
Taking this deal frozen.
Oh, help them get what they want. Get this rest. Must've been put around now. See, like.
Now we can discuss what's going in the meeting. I kind of had an idea to it.
But a lot of times. These are those small, short. Yeah, it's quite a great list.
It's illegal.
Right.
So.
No. He's down from all the action last. He's at home. Somebody's got to be. Do you have to get that? Different light. Yes, there was, I think I just came up. Going on.
She will shy of two inches.
She can ask.
I didn't fucking.
Might bring the instrument that's got a hole in it.
They don't work very good that way.
I can tell you, we didn't get any.
I put a new one off. That's gonna work. I don't get shot.
We have. He's doing it. You would get more with your direction.
Well, it's nine thirty almost. So choose please stand for courage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Home meeting to order with everyone you ask. He will be recorded. If you choose not to be recorded, you have the option of leaving. First item on the agenda this morning, Julie, thank you. Is your water safety? Morning, Julie.
Good morning. I guess I picked the right day when you don't have a lot to do. But I don't have very much. I just have a few questions. I'm trying to again, a more complete understanding of how our water safety is is managed and in the county. And I was talking to Mark last week and he just happened to mention that the landfill has some kind of an escrow account for closing it down at the end. And I thought, wow, that's a good idea since it is a toxic site. I think it's considered that. And so I'm wondering, is there an ongoing monitoring process that happens then after it's closed down?
Yeah, so many years it's monitored. It's monitored now. There's so many monitoring wells around the whole landfill. They're monitored so many times a year and it's all DNR reported.
Okay, great. That's a good idea.
I'm not sure the number of years after it closes.
I think it's twenty years.
Still gotta be monitored, yeah.
So do they assume that after twenty years then? Nothing's gonna happen? Is that?
I I don't know. I guess that's. The DNR says that's. The question. That's a DNR question.
Okay. The other thing is then if if those if that site is monitored, how is it? What sort of recourse do we have for like KFOs and things like that that age out? Somebody stopped using them and do they just sit there then or what? What happens with a a KFO site that's no longer used? Is there any? Is there any funds to clean up that kind of thing or?
That's also a jurisdiction of the DNR.
That's also under the DNR. So so the county has no say in that.
No.
I don't wish we did. We do not.
Okay. So people that are in the county that are living on acreages, they are responsible for watching their own wells. Is that?
Yeah.
The way it goes. So we we don't.
Watch their well tested. You go, Doug, go take a sample. Go get a water kit sample and sample it and you send it in. Give your test.
He's referring to Doug Grow, the sanitary.
Sanitary, county sanitary.
Okay, okay, so.
You want your water tested, you can get your kit.
So if new KFOs want to come in, then you don't have any say about about how they're controlled or clean up afterwards, anything of that nature. Okay.
We have a state, but it doesn't. That's so far hasn't mattered.
That's where is that the matrix thing that?
Yes.
Okay.
DNR. The DNR matrix. We have another matrix, but that is for employee salaries. It's different.
We. The it depends on which level it's at. It could be the quarter adjustment, could be planning and zoning. There are public hearings involved. People attend those. But ultimately, it is up to the DNR. Tony could speak to this too, but. Very little local control when it comes to.
That's really, that's really interesting because I I was watching this video. I was actually a film about the driftless area and the road trip and they stopped at toppling Goliath. And I had never been inside to see all these huge vats where they make their beer and everything. And I'm thinking, wow, the the water that they're using. And they have a reverse osmosis for all their systems. So they purified us, but depending on what kind of a system you have, you either lose four gallons of water for every gallon you gain or sometimes just one gallon for every gallon you gain. But that's a lot of water. And we have three of those breweries around here in our county. And I'm just thinking them alone, if they have contaminated water, maybe they can't function anymore. I don't know. It's just something that occurred to me. But anyway. Well, thank you for that information. And I know that the city, the city council does monitor the wells around here in the city. But I was just wondering how the county and what kind of.
Every one of the cities that has a municipal water supply tests their water daily.
Daily.
And then report, report to the DNR on all of all of those. Any well that they have has to be checked. If it's any are small communities that are incorporated that have a public water system or the city of Decor, any of the cities have the same responsibility.
There there's certain things they have to have to test and work, but not necessarily. They don't have to test for everything. My understanding.
Coli probably is one of the major ones and probably some of the other POVs or whatever they call.
EPOS or.
And each one of those, each one of those wells that are tested, there is a certification process that each of the each of those workers have to go through with CEUs and the rest of that so that they're up to speed on what they do. Those are all state requirements.
The city water department would be happy to meet with you about that. I know TJ Chisel, the landfill would be happy to take you on a tour. I'm sure you have that monitored and tested. The Iowa Water Survey is another piece of information that's really good to look at.
Is that just online Iowa well water?
It's through Iowa City.
Oh, Iowa City, okay.
I could email you some links.
Yeah, that would be interesting. Okay, so.
We did just do the Castina Sewer Project, which isn't it all what you might imagine it would look like? It's it will fit into this room.
Really?
Almost. Just now. Lots of tanks and comes out basically drinking a lot of cleaning good.
Through tanks. Yeah.
And these and that one has, again, they waste all the wastewater plants have periodic treatment and the same certifications and so forth. And that level applies to cities that have wastewater treatments.
They use a UV light and all goes through to kill the bacteria and things. It's pretty basic to see. I was expecting you have a big complex and it's not at all.
So the the cities are pretty well managed then, but it seems like out in the county, you own an acreage, you're kind of on your own.
You should.
Well, that's your own water. You got to drill your own well, take your water. I mean, that's that's not the county's responsibility. You want water, you got to drill your own well. You can drill at a hundred and fifty, four hundred, five hundred. You can drill wherever you want to go.
Not all of them are great. There's statistics for that, too. Of the fourteen or whatever, fourteen hundred wells in the county, over three hundred are contaminated. Over three hundred.
You could test it two different times a year and you might get different results.
Many of those are contaminated, are old, very shallow wells. Many of those are being replaced and plugged. There's a program within the state that if you can, if you have an old well that you're abandoning, that's to be the state will put it seven hundred dollars for you to plug it. Help cover the covers.
So they know nothing from the top.
So it doesn't so it doesn't contaminate. And then each of the watersheds have the Turkey River and the Iowa have monitoring.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your introduction. I appreciate it.
But you're a great question.
Thank you.
But, yeah.
We just have a hundred thousand fish killed.
Yeah.
Ten mile region.
Yeah.
Good question.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Julie.
Next item on the agenda, Mike, you're the county engineer.
It's all yours. All right, well, part week last week. Let's do this. Through the things here, we're still finding us for the building. There's no new information on that. Railroad five power bridge study coordination will work on that this week. Subdivision data did not work on that last week, like I said I would, but I have, I'm looking forward to this week. May days activities for two thousand twenty five are being coordinated. Just got off the phone with Brunings and we're looking at possibly starting the contract rock applications next week, possibly. I'm about halfway through the two thousand twenty five Biden amendment. So it should be finishing up later today. The there's street positions available within the secondary roads. That's for a bridge crew for sign man and for the scoop. We have eleven applications so far. All the scoop applications have been received. That's the equipment operator two on the on the the union to go on the union list. So that's going to be a special one. SS four A grant meeting was held March twenty fourth in the courthouse jury room. As soon as I get the safety action plan, I will submit it to the board if that been received yet. Nothing new of a Jeff Peel situation had occurred last week. Nasty Valley construction started last week. Full burning of disturbed areas will be will be coordinated with the conservation department. We did the control burn, but but small earth moving activities may happen as it's deemed appropriate by by superintendent. So we can't, we can't open up too much land because we don't have our slip permit because if anything over an acre requires that slip permit. So we gotta wait before we go. You know, in earnest. At the time of the writing, two striking bids have been received. Actually, it's now three. We're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is one of the bids. This is. Was that? What were you anticipating it would be? About that. So the the meeting with Kamla I talked about a couple of weeks ago. Their per linear foot quote came in within a couple of thousand of their per square yard. So. Oh, yeah. It made sense. I met with subsurface ink on a UV liner covert refurbishment. That was down in Black Hawk County. The the product is very impressive. So what they do is they take a they had two, they had three culverts that they were doing on Wednesday and you you slip line. This threaded material and has a resin and it hardens inside of the, in this case, it was the concrete pipe. And within the start of the slip line to the finish takes about an hour for the cross a two lane roads. Very impressive, very fast. So they they went in one afternoon from eleven thirty till to four o'clock, they did three culverts. So very fast.
It's impressive.
It is very impressive how fast it is.
No road closure.
No road closure. It's a down to one lane. So it's it's that's that's the advantage and for high traffic roads. Might be a might be an option.
The same thing. Sewer lines.
So sleep throughout. Yep.
Just lines the whole project.
Yeah, with concrete or corrugated metal pipe, it increases the capacity of the pipe because it's a smoother wall. So a lot of good. And then the other thing is is by itself without the covert that's already in place. It has a hundred year lifespan. So upfront cost still are a concern, but but.
If you have to, if you are on a whole piece across a road, how would I compare having to pull it and replace it? If you if you the the slip line versus excavate, remove, replace, refill and repave.
That would probably go with the depth of the pipe.
Yeah, it goes with depth. Like it's hard to it's hard in its size, the size of the pipe. You start, you start getting into, you know, how how long and everything else. So it's a it's not a easy thing to just say.
It's about the same money your life.
No, it's definitely more more. And that's that's really why it's that's the way I'm not wanting to use it. I mean, an ideal situation would have been like an old stage that we just had. Because that's one of our higher traffic roads. We were shallow there, so we didn't really need it. But if it had been, you know, a four or five foot deep pipe, it might have, you know, been worth it. And the other thing I talked to the representative of the subsurface, it gives us an option if we have, you know, a couple of cave in somewhere to just have someone get something done. So things are opened up for an emergency situation. It really gives us a good backup plan that way too. So I was very impressed with that.
Your lifespan though. I may be replacing that before that typically.
Some of our some of our covert pipe, reinforced concrete pipe are a hundred years as well. I mean, it's just one of those things where it's how much of movement happens? Because these con these concrete pipes that are precast and it's split open. But now what we're specifying is that all the joints be tied together. So if it's they're not failing that way, we're probably going to have equivalent lifespans. But it gets us a chance to use what's already in place for sure.
Although I get those cracks and starts sucking the dirt in.
Yeah. That's and 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 it doesn't disturb the soil. So you don't get dips over the next five to ten years and things like. There's a lot of good things with it. So I'm it was good for me to go there to put it in my head.
Does that slip wire reduce the amount of sedimentation that would follow it and say a corrugated corrugated?
Yeah, it does. But again, corrugated metal is very in terms of dollars now is extremely economical, but the and that would be a huge cost relative to that. So it's that's why county starting, I don't know, fifteen years ago, started putting all all the new culverts underneath the paved roads to be the the reinforced concrete. And I think we'll continue that for, you know, the time, you know, this so that we can keep getting good funding to do that, continue that effort. Because then the replacement, you know, fifty, sixty years down the road will be something like this, then all of a sudden.
New technology.
Or some new technology, but but this is this was a good, a good site visit on Black Hawk County. Yeah, just wanted to share my excitement there with. And then the FEMA is the same as it was last week. Still would like to be our hundred thousand dollars in our secondary road fund. So that is the engineer's report for a short week.
I had a guy I talked to the other day said where they took the core samples of W fourteen. If they some of them plugs came out or whether it's open yet.
I don't know about that. So I.
I'll just he just I just talked to him the other day. He just noticed that when he was going down the road with his tractor, it's a little easier to see. I don't know which, yeah, I imagine they know where they're where they're at. He said he seen a couple of them that were open.
Do you know the whereabouts?
It'd have to be be between Ridgeway and Spillville. I know that's where he lives anyway. He must have been going down the road with his tractor that you notice that.
Sure.
When they brought them out or.
Oh, that's the guys about it.
Yeah. And and then there's two of them that he noticed.
Did you talk, either you or Mike, did either you or Mark talk with Mike Christopher about his concern out on road down past the paved road down past his house on the river? No. He was saying that on the where the river comes around, there's an island. I don't know exactly where he's talking about. Because I tried to explain it to me, but it didn't register. That there was the river is cutting back into the bank. We've got down river, upriver from it. I think we have more rip raft, but we don't there. And it seems to be undermining. And you can notice on the center centerline section, starting to see a crack where where that is probably influencing.
Who is this?
Mike Christopher.
Okay. What road is that?
I don't know where the road was. It's right there. Paved road by the river. Must, I don't know. No, it's.
On the west side.
Northwest. On the west side up there.
Is it bluffing road? Getting close to bluffing road.
I've got to be close to bluffing road. It's been down, you know, down on the bottom.
Hey.
I'm not sure where that where all he was just described me and I didn't even give you a road number. So.
Okay, I think I have Mike's. I have his contact somewhere. Yeah.
But it was when he said it was undermining, he was starting to see some movement in that center in the center pavement joint.
Okay.
That is, it was enough concern.
Yeah.
Cell phone. Five, six, three, four, one, nine. Four, five, six, six. He's in the excavation, excavation business, their whole family. We don't want to.
No, definitely not. You're talking about, yeah, it'd be a conversation about how to fix that. So we'll get that looked at ASAP.
Do you have any of those bids today? Paint strike, paint two, okay?
We keep their bids don't aren't due until four PM. So that was that was on the agenda because I knew that it was coming up and I forgot that it was at four o'clock. So we have to wait until all the bids. So it'll be something for next week. So. Yeah.
That's it?
That is it. I I there was a lot of effort over the previous couple of months and I'm certain I'm looking forward to buttoning up a lot of these. I have been on here for too long. So.
Five year plan map.
Five year plan map, yes. And I have that written down, too.
I know what you've got a lot of.
That would be really nice, yes.
When's the deadline for the applications for the jobs?
We have had for two, but because we want to have one interview process, we're kind of milking it until we get all the applications in for the last job here. So.
And that's another week.
I want to say it's two. Because. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was sometime in the past, I think, Mark, did you bring a possible application of putting a grinding head on the scoop for brush clearing?
We have. We have a we have a grinding head on our skid loader.
I thought we. Was there one that we were talking about that would go on the scoop to this so mobile and easy to work?
That was a that was there was a similar proposal put forth by the the focus crew where we would have a another.
Rubber tire.
Rubber tire. And commit to that. I had looked into just using our old one before we sold it. And nobody, nobody else really was thinking of it as a good idea to do that. First of all, who's going to do it? Who's going to keep? Who's going to keep the maintenance up on that? It's it's best when we can have one operator. Run it. Run it and keep the maintenance records and everything else up. It's an old, it was an old one. It was losing power. So we can't just mothball that.
Where the roadside come out of the rural supplemental fund. Something like that. Could that be predicted?
The well that would, if we were to do that, I would.
Yeah.
Do all the improvements into that fund for sure.
Yeah, I think if you bought it, just that one, just all of that.
But that was, I think that's primarily when the states use along their roadways for brush clearing and the rest of that.
Yeah, it is a it is a matter of how to procedurally make sure that we are taking care of our equipment. Who's doing that?
I think the past got pretty beat up when we went down into the ditches for a lot of this work.
The the boom mower, things like that. Yes, that was that's kind of.
Put that on track. That's this here is a whole different thing. You put on the wheel excavators, a lot heavier arm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you get if you have one person in charge of it, that way that rural supplemental fund, you could take the whole wheel excavator and moved off there because it's just specified. You get just four.
Correct. I don't know. And that was the other, that issue would be the other. Correct. I don't know. And that was the other, that issue would be the other.
The great spot to check out.
The wheeled excavator would not necess- if we had, I can't, I wouldn't be able to guarantee that it'd just stay on the roadside stuff kind of thing.
But if we had one just specified, well, just for that.
Yeah, I, I'm hesitant to do that based off of the pushback. Um, what I would say on all that is, is that Howard County does something like this. And the reason they did that, something like that is because they have an old uh, excavator that they have, I think it's two people that operated. And, and it, the trade in value was something like
Nothing.
Nothing. And they were like, well, it's, it's gonna serve us better if we can just use this. I looked into that and, and when I talked to the, the shop guys, they said, the way the, the power is draining out of this and I, we don't wanna do that. So I, I'm hesitant to, to go down that road, not knowing what my, who my labor operator is gonna, but maybe, I just don't know a lot of those things. And and right now we got a busy May, June and July coming up. And I just didn't be sitting.
Yeah.
So I just, that's where I'm at on this.
If we do fall winter ditch clean, would that be something that would work in for a filling, for a fill in, you know, being able to get rid of a lot of the brush and so forth?
I, I'm open to that. Um, again, that's, it's, uh, the, I, the September, October, uh, maintenance schedules, I haven't put my head around. I've been really focused on getting all of these um, culvert projects, tying those into our, our auto seal projects and making sure that, you know, things are, are scheduled in a way that kind of makes sense for our guys. Um, that being said, you know, down the road. I mean, it almost, in a sense, maybe we buy the head and rent, rent the equipment. Is that, is that a better option? I don't know. Something like that. Uh, so that way it's not ours to maintain. Just, just talking this out, you know, right now on the fly here, uh, but I just.
We had that piece of equipment.
And it was already, it was already tracked. Like, again, I did look into this and it, and it was recommended by two out of three, um, mechanics that you probably don't wanna keep it. And so.
Rent one, it can still come out of the rural fund.
Correct.
Just for that.
Correct. Yeah. So.
Your lease one for three months in the fall or something and.
Something like that. And then if we have a, a wintry fall, we can, you know, only use it for a month and a half. So that's kind of where I'm at with, with that. That's like just a good scenario there for that.
But the head cost was about twenty, twenty some thousand.
Yeah, I think it was.
Twenty-four?
I don't remember. I don't wanna say the wrong thing publicly. Sorry.
It's not a lot. It can save a lot of man hours to use that machine.
It would, um, so. So.
Then we go behind and spray.
Yeah. So I, yeah, just another piece of equipment is, um, sitting a little bit, uh, awkward on, on what it is I wanna get done. Yeah. So.
I have another guy, um, W fourteen north. I don't know. Then real bad spots if a guy ever could just back the cement, bring the concrete out of it. One of them, just try one and just put gravel in it for, let it set for how many you can get it.
Yeah.
Must be about two or three that have real bad spots in there. You, you're, your whole thing is bad or what?
I, I don't, yeah, I, I.
I keep here at night every time I go to Ridgeway.
W fourteen north is just, it's probably, it's, yeah, it's a bad dream for me. Um, I wanna, if I had a, a huge amount of money, I would probably just take the whole thing out, put a, put a, um,
You grab a root and grapple.
A material, uh, ge- a geo material, geo grid on it. And, and, um, work it that way, but that's just too expensive for, for us to do. Um, so now I have, I have to think of something else. Um, I think, I think what might end up happening is it's just gonna be a bad road for twenty years. And then we're gonna have enough material on it that it eventually starts to work itself out. But that, that's, that's the hope. Uh, that's the best hope I could have for.
Whole concrete out, I haven't put gravel in them and let it burn its way somehow that way or not, or.
I mean, the other thing would be something like.
It'll be a complaint that's, that's bad.
The other thing would be something like a, a build grant, uh, you know, some kind of federal grant funding, special grant funding on something like this. I mean, that would be, that's always gonna be on my shortlist of things to apply for. But in this case, it didn't, it didn't have the, the stipu- it didn't meet all the stipulation as well as study fourteen south did.
Oh, yeah.
So.
One of those, is one of the issues getting water off underneath that road, that way the geogrid.
Yeah, uh, well, the geogrid in this case is, uh, it would allow for the road to be supported in tension, the whole length of the way. So that way, um, you know, the roads where it wants to fall down, it's also supported, you know, longitude along that whole length. It's a, it's a structural fix, not a, not a, uh,
Not moisture.
Not a moisture fix in this case. But the moisture thing would, it certainly help.
Cause I said when they poured or they put that in that time, it was wet that year. So they dug out around all the culverts and put rock in. He said, now that, that doesn't heat and everything else does, but it's got.
Yeah, I was gonna say differential heating is the, the problem with what happened there. So, um, and they tried to go deeper to, to try to make everything even, but.
It didn't work.
No, it didn't unfortunately. So, yeah.
Can't grind it.
I wish I could give you good news on that one. I do.
Don't try to break it. It's kind of, it's, it's a fix when the problem was the base.
As that, I mean, Frankville Road is awful. Uh, W forty-two is getting worse, but W fourteen north is the one that's like, what do you do?
Go over to one thirty-nine and drive one thirty-nine.
That's not my road.
I know, but it's smoother. And it's not great either.
Oh, it's not.
On the state's side.
Yeah, it was, the state wants to give it to us.
No, we don't want that.
Yeah, I know. I just.
How many bridges on that road?
No. So.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
And what do we have for consent?
We have one item on the consent agenda and that's approval of the minutes from last week.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Uh, the committee reports, community service building. They're moved in anyway. They got huge items to move out of the old one, but ninety-nine percent of main moved so far. What kind of list did you have there?
Oh, my land. We have, we have about forty, we have about fifty some file cabinets out there that need a home. And that ranges from two drawers to four drawers, to five drawers, to lateral files, to standard old style, to black file cabinets, brown file cabinets and gray file cabinets.
Standing.
Most with locks and keys. Uh.
Don't you have a?
Oh, we have the years nineteen eighties medical file cabinets that rotate around really slick and nice. They were really the, a great thing in the nineteen eighties for medical records and, and the X-ray films. But today, there doesn't seem to be a lot of, lot of, uh, need. I think we have too much digital today. And we have probably still have maybe thirty some chairs out there of a variety. Some are probably suspect to injury. Not exactly the best. There's miss, a number of mismatched colors and so forth. A few of blue this and a few of black that and some with arms and some that are, and probably three very nice looking burgundy ones. So.
Couple of plan with all this.
Couple of desk chairs that are really suspect and I.
No, they don't, I've said it and they don't raise up.
Oh, no, no.
That's why.
Uh, you need, I would suggest that we perhaps just consider, uh, with the short, short timing that we have, uh, put a notice up and advertise, uh, open house, open house garage sale, make an offer, uh, or set a price on file cabinets do not have, they were very expensive to purchase. They were, most of those are fond files, which were, are very good. Uh, I'd suggest, I don't know, ten dollars a piece or something on them, uh, because.
Five dollars.
Five dollars a piece, two dollars on a chair, uh, something. Because if we take our staff to move them and store them and everything else, I just don't see the need.
Store them.
No, I really think we.
Like Saturday morning, we could have that garage sale, you know, start.
There's one coming up in May.
We've gotta have, we've gotta have, uh, well, we haven't, we haven't, we have a minute, we have, what is it, thirteenth of the calendar is our bid opening and we need to be able to show the building. Uh, which would probably be somewhere around first of May. But we really have about ten days at this point with the delay of the move out of D H S. So I don't really think we have, I think we just need to try to create some stir and get the radio station to talk about it or get the paper to.
The county has a Facebook site.
Yes.
So we can put it on Facebook.
John, John Luke, he could, John Motley could put it on.
Put a press release. Uh, people can benefit from it, you know, otherwise, you know, our other option is uh, notify the small cities, notify the other counties, this is where we're gonna come take a look.
What day are you talking about?
I'm, I'm suggesting a weekend. We, we have really one.
We got one, two.
We really have one week. Between here, May first, it'd be almost like this weekend, we'd have to do it.
If we decide here.
If we decide to.
Maybe we're gonna have a drop dead date. Nobody coming. I mean, you get X amount, he's gone, all the good stuff's gone. You end up with just the ones that nobody really wants. That'd be the day their recycling comes out, their trailers, load it all up.
I suggest we keep the majority of it if we can. We have a place to put them, cause they're expensive.
Are, is somebody willing to sit out there? Maybe you could do twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth from this hour to this hour in those two days.
I can be out there on Saturday. I'll take the time. But I, I would say, I would say one, usually I think most garage sales are just Saturday. And I would, Sunday I'd be.
Saturday morning.
Saturday morning. Cause I think you're very limited of what you, what we have available. There's some bookshelves, metal bookshelves.
You guys can be there from nine to noon on Saturday and buy supplies on everything and go for it.
Or, and make, and or make an offer. Uh, I mean, what it's gonna cost is to move them is more than the value to us. And we just have to find somebody that, main thing would be if we could find someone that could use them. Otherwise, if they have recycled value and then we gotta, that'll just kind of cover the labor.
Or really nice L-shaped desks, stand alone. There's some of that hooked to the cubicle walls, but there's junk there.
You know, we all serve on different variety of boards. We can let those boards know too.
And you're the nonprofit.
Again, we have some media in the room.
We do.
I think also maybe after the, they have the sale, have the depot come up, see if there's anything they feel it could benefit from.
Well, that, yeah, the falling.
And they have, they can haul it themselves.
Yeah, cause we're, like, for example, we have black file cabinets. We have of the straight stand up kind, we have, uh, well, uh, two drawer, four drawer and five drawer. If you add in the black lateral files, we have those also. We have black metal shelves, we have wooden shelves. The wooden shelves, I would, I would just only suggest we throw those away.
Yeah.
Uh, there's.
See, somebody might want them.
There's some desks, you know, or they're pre, so we don't end up with them in the landfill.
Cause that all eight loads, uh, they're down the spectrum and two pickups.
You got a gold star today.
Yes. So, I, I know what's left, yeah.
Oh, the cube of walls, they're quite.
The ones that are good, there are quite a number of those that, in our storage unit or maybe some of the speed house. We wanna, he, I suggest we put them someplace.
Yeah, they're, they're very expensive. They're very good, very good quality. And.
They're two foot and four foot.
Some, some organization or something down the road can use those.
Yeah, they're not hard.
No, they come across, they, they're easily.
They're just doing four footers, so. So I have two footers left.
And there's.
You and I, Steve, from nine to noon.
I'll do it with, with you then. I'll bring the coffee.
You only have two.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
You're, you're publishing it though.
See, I think for safety sake, we probably better, well, no.
I think we better do too. Or if you, if you wanna be there, if you're good and you auction and so forth, surely I'll be glad, I'll.
I've had a farm meeting that day. So I'm out of town.
That was, I could try.
Sorry, I could have been there the following week.
Well, if we have such a port turn out and we have that.
Third.
Or, or if we have people that are just clamoring to be there, surely maybe we could discuss it the next Monday.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Um, are we gonna notify the, the cities and talked about?
Yeah. I'll get all of all the ones in my district and your, your district is covered because you're there too. Just let, let, we'll let somebody let the city of Decore, you let the city.
The counties that.
The other counties, uh, we just notify them through the, the list from the six county meeting.
Well, we have, is it four that are in that?
Four in there.
Whatever those four are, because they potentially have money invested in that.
Do I think that they were responding?
Who knows? And I'll swing into the library and auction. Yeah, it's if any municipality wants, we can give it to them. At least a dollar.
You gotta put a dollar something on it.
Yeah, no, we put a couple of dollars on chair.
If the county, county's one, they got one.
That's just transfer.
Anybody else you gotta, you gotta put.
I don't.
You gotta put a, some kind of dollar a month period on it. So we gotta.
Internally, I don't know if there's any other departments in our county per se. I don't have anybody wants. What do you need?
Well, like I said, that L-shaped drip desk, there's four of them really nice ones and a nice U-shaped going in the front too. I mean, there. Yeah.
Who's submitting it to the paper? Entity decor news dot com.
Got it right here.
There you are.
This is the Saturday from nine to noon.
Nine to noon. Next to the Iowa Department of Transportation.
File cabinet depths.
File cabinet depths.
Show.
Chair of show. Wes Lanius.
What did you say? Where will it be?
It's, you know where the Department of Transportation has their maintenance station on Highway fifty-two.
South fifty-two.
It's directly alongside it, uses the same common driveway into it.
It used to be the engineer's office.
And there's a big, big for red, red and white and says for sale sign in front of it right there. It's pretty visible from the street.
So you transported all that over there?
It's all there. That's where, that's where D H S used to be.
We moved eight loads and two pickup loads out of, down to the new building.
And so there's, they've, their entire staff and, and operation been moved down to the community services building. And that building is now empty and, and for sale for.
Well, it ain't empty.
Well, it's empty of people. Unoccupied, vacant building with stuff in it.
It's, it comes with property.
Four acres of property.
Breakers for going with it.
And that lower level portion of it, it's cause it's a walkout, it's a walkout. Thirty-six hundred square feet on each floor. The walkout lower level goes into a, a big gravel, huge big gravel parking lot and, and big flat surface area.
Make a big house.
Well, I guess.
Yeah, we don't have anything else.
Meetings this week for behavioral health, I R C and D. There's a great, uh, public library meeting, corporate library meeting tonight at six with the line in market. Good to go to.
CSS meeting on Wednesday or details. Or maybe.
Yes.
See. There's nothing else. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, third, third, we all goes in favor, say aye.
Okay. Okay, yeah, okay, you're putting that up for me. Yeah. It's coming Saturday night twelve, I just called that, yeah, it's, you know, it's, we're gonna, I'm gonna.
Yeah. Social service.
Petitions they can make, petitions they can make a bid on.
It's the one that. I'd want to do some, our major Jesse's, wherever they can, also, we, 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 we.
Example, you could take the lottery's office and.
With the D Jesse, there is, that is now.
No, it's, it was, the way it's set up, we have to have sign. You know, you have, come up, we'll say it worked, I'm gonna stand there, and if you're doing something, you don't notice. Yeah, we have maintained sidelines. I think we're good, uh, treasures.
There's.
A lot of. I don't say, I don't, who in court, there's.
Mental. He gets some shelving on the building, a lot of shelves, so. The, uh, this is the one where not every county's gonna have an office.
That's what I.
If you wanna.
We already wrote the bottom forty, they're fifty.
There's a rolling stamp, rolling steps, stand out there, where it's a piece, and so they can use that out there.
Our state already, so the bottom next quarter.
See.
I can have a rec.
We gotta make sure.
It is, they were pretty excited.
Uh, first, they're, they're.
They're property, yeah, they're used, yeah. They're property. No, it's a max, last two options for them, they work. Then we.
Yeah, it's three, four, and five.
I do always have.
Whatever their, their wish list, they're saying, we're just reannouncing, they don't want.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
But they were just.
We should be. The chickens would. That's how bad they were, that's how bad they were. Throw them out there like. Next time to do tours, like.
It's gonna be this.
Yeah, so I have.
We may go up there, I don't know, we may, uh. Got your truck? I'm, there's a, a rolling.
Yeah.
And water. Is that your question, or? Naturally, that's, that's all. Wood and the plumber. Comes from the air.
Like you stand there, oh.
Starter. He's right up longer. Right inside the door to your right. I did this one time, cause I was curious, so we never swing with this, and we made noise, and we forgot to, we, which were right past, Tom, and we're, we're done, bro. But, I'm just gonna leave it, I think.
No.
Cover it.
It's, it's gross.
It had grown, there was no yeast in it, but it's still grown because of the mold. It's in the hairs. It started to dry, so I baked it. Since. The moldy dance, it didn't rise enough, but it's more tasted kind of like sourdough, it was just basically the same thing. Sour dough is just a fermented, oh, really? So, like. I think it's. It has a toward, it's starting as air. It's what's called. And a study that we did, like just regular. Sandwich bread or something. Yeah, yeah. And actually. It seems like because our geology is different, also, it's basically the same recipe, it's just a little stronger, and a sponge, with. But there's four, so, although, the, and we have the equipment to push it on. And others, no. Hey, Shirley. I have. Hello. Hello. And actually, sorry, because you don't need it. Um, he, and you can't. So, I mix it in a bowl, and you do, it's all scratch and folds, all the way, fold it.